Yes. That's it.
I'm on the computer. I'm on the computer.
All right, Jim.
Yeah, can you record it in the end and just next up recorded it?
I'll be hoping and go on our website.
Yeah.
That's a three, I know only. Yep. I was tempted to call him back. Ask him if there was a woman in. And she's a person.
What are you gonna say?
If you don't come on, this guy will shoot all the cats. He'll come. I'll go.
How would she know? Like, she pointed out from. It's one of her meetings.
I think you should have to plug it into the.
All right. It's okay.
Okay, we all set, Lisa? You don't know, okay. We'll assume that it's being recorded.
Yes.
Okay. Meeting opens at seven oh three at the Old Town Hall, eleven eleven Somerset Avenue. This meeting is maybe video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting at www.dighton-mass.gov and YouTube. Would everyone stand please for the pledge of allegiance? Put the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have minutes from the. From our May and June meetings. Let's do the May meeting first. We have a couple changes that have been made. Lisa has the changes. If. If people are willing to accept what they have with the changes, please make a motion.
Motion to accept minutes from May. Two thousand twenty-four with the edits that have been made.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. You need to state the specific date of those minutes.
He said, uh, May thirtieth.
May thirtieth, okay, well.
He said that.
Did he?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have. The June twentieth minutes. Okay, so we'll put those aside. Okay, so we will wait until our August meeting to to review the minutes that have been drafted. Okay, now, next on the agenda is we received a letter of resignation from Jason LaChance. From the Commission. Is there a motion to accept his resignation?
Motion to accept Jason LaChance's resignation from the Conservation Committee.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have the opening of a position of for a new member opening. What is the desire of the Commission?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to table the new member appointment until the August meeting.
Okay, do you have a reason for that?
We are missing our Paul Reynolds.
Okay, I know he has indicated that he would like to be out of the discussion. Is there a second to table?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda, we have an Enrad application by Dean Smith of New Leaf Dighton Energy Storage, one LLC for Mained Lane. Site visit with Beta and New Leaf consultant occurred on five one twenty-four. Beta will be in attendance to present their peer review report issued six nineteen and seven twelve.
Yes, please.
Why don't you stand stand here? I don't know how active that mic is and how it fits into the TV, but. At least everyone can see you.
So my name is Tyler Drew with Beta Group. I'm one of the permitting team that was on this, working on this project. So Jonathan Nero was also one of the reviewers who went out with. GZA, I believe. On July eighth. To confirm and they made several adjustments to. Wetland series A. D and. Was E. They found that the. The wetlands delineated in the Enrad plans to be accurate.
Okay, so we have a an accurate review from Beta for the wetlands. Yes, Lisa.
So one of the comments data made on page five. Was that the ORAD should document the presence of the certifiable vernal pools. So there's certifiable vernal pools on the property. And I think those should be certified and we should ask them to be certified before we issue the.
Okay, uh, if I'm not mistaken, they said that they would treat them as certified. In in one, okay, but we can still ask the applicant to certify them. All right, so we can take their their letter to accept them as certified, but. Make when you do your your review on it or your written report, you can say, we want them certified.
But I think. Am I correct? And Jonathan's response is that they should be certified before we actually issue them.
Um, I believe those, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So what it is is it would give natural heritage more information. And I think actually, quite frankly, we should be doing it on all the Enrads for this vernal pool. Cause their atlas is gonna be coming out soon.
Okay.
Can be more inclusive.
So how how long would it take them to get their certification done?
It'd take very long.
Okay, I mean, there might even be some water still in them and. There's still a lot of activity, I know there is near my house.
Yeah, I mean, if they took photos, right?
Yeah, yeah, very well documented.
Okay, all right, so we can continue it until and request that they certify them before acceptance is is written up.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
No, that was all I had.
Okay, what I'm looking for then is a motion. To continue for the purpose of the applicant certifying the vernal pools on site.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, Lisa, you will. Contact. The applicant and.
I'm right here.
Yeah.
I'll I'll talk to GTA to get that certificate paperwork as soon as possible. I would also request copies of Beta's reports. We haven't. They haven't been.
Oh.
Plus.
Yeah, okay.
We could have already started that.
Yeah, that might have been on us. We had a vacation, Maureen's been out a lot with some. Family Matters, so that might have been us.
Okay.
If you requested from us and we didn't, or?
I had sent Maureen an email.
Okay.
After I saw that.
Sorry.
Okay.
Want to take this with you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll that'll be helpful. I can divide it to GTA so that they can close it.
Otherwise, we'll be waiting till Monday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so so we're all set for now then with you, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I I'll let Lisa know this means it's complete so that we know if we can come back next month.
Yeah.
Yeah, our next meeting is August fifteenth.
Yes, hopefully you can just wrap it up if they if they think.
Like Tyler said, it's been well off.
Just just submitting the paperwork, okay.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, another Enrad from Calribello Bell Farms Estates seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero Milk Street. That's map seventeen lots one oh nine, one thirty-five and two zero eight, file number seventeen dash four eighty-nine. Site visit between applicant and Weston and Sampson. Being conducted, was conducted on five ten, scope of peer review services for phase three. What do we have on that, Lisa?
So the money was received and we are just gonna be scheduling that at some point so that applicant requested a continuance.
Okay.
Or a continuance, but. But yes.
Okay, is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue the Enrad for Calribello Bell Farm Estates continued to eight fifteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next we have a notice of intent from Ahmed Hafiz of Grasshopper. Okay. This has been continued several times. They wanted to do work clearing twenty-eight trees within the buffer zone. Lisa, what's what's happening with this? Is are you having any confirmation of anything with them?
Requested it. What I do know is last night they had a joint storm. I should say, I remember the complaint. So it's days. A joint stormwater, a pinewood meeting with the applicant because they were having problems with their basins and they need to be designed. So they were marking Weston and Sampson to figure out what needs to be done. And. So I think this portion of the project is just done, but we haven't received anything more. And it hasn't been two years, so we really can't speak about it.
Okay, motion to continue then is there?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have an abbreviated notice of intent and Enrad filed by David E. Butler seeking confirmation of wetland resources at eight three three William Street, map eight lot twenty, file number seventeen dash four nine. Four ninety-nine. Peer review services received from Weston and Sampson in the amount of forty-seven hundred twenty dollars and contract was signed. Okay, the Lisa, we have, is there someone here from that address?
All right. They they submitted a continuance. They actually responded to Weston and Sampson. I don't think. Megan's in the middle of preparing proposals for us. So we still have no response to their comment left from our original proposal, so we'll have that at the next meeting. And then that initial work can happen. Okay.
Okay.
So that.
They want to continue it?
Yeah.
Okay, David, we're gonna have a motion?
Motion to continue.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Boy, it's tough getting older.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah, speak for yourself.
I haven't left yet.
All right, okay.
Is that to a later date or the next month on that continuance? Next month? Asking me what the amount is she needs to pay back.
Ninety-seven.
Twenty-two, right?
I don't know, but I know it was ninety-seven in trade.
You got the paper at home?
No.
I've given you the papers. I have in the office.
Okay.
I'll tell him Monday.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get rid of wanting to know.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is is an Enrad application from Antonio Almeida TNA Realty Trust seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero William Street, map twenty-one lot twenty. Plan prepared by Riverhawk Environmental, DEP file number seventeen dash five hundred. Site visit conducted by Weston and Sampson and peer review report issued six thirteen. Is there someone here representing? Lisa, have you heard anything on this?
Yes, so they are scheduled to do next phase. Site visit next week.
Next week.
Yeah, we received it.
Okay, is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to eight fifteen.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have another Enrad application by Tyler Ryan seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero Oak Street, map six lot nine thirteen and fourteen A, file number seventeen dash five hundred two. Proposal receive a peer review from Weston and Sampson at seventy-one hundred fifty dollars. Proposal signed, site visit conducted seven eight. Do we have representation?
So I just found that one correction East Point Energy is actually the applicant as well, and that wasn't. Nobody on here, but for the record, it's East Point Energy.
East Point?
Yeah.
Hi, good evening, my name is Mark Bergeron.
How you doing, Mark?
Good, how you doing? I'm a senior wetland scientist with Epsilon Association here this evening on behalf of East Point. Made a presentation last time, the Commission voted to send it to peer review as as was indicated. We had a site visit. Weston and Sampson did issue a report. Essentially, I can go through their comments. One of their comments was our table of contents had some errors in the Enrad. We fixed that, submitted a revised attachment A narrative, corrected that. Our second comment was that the narrative noted that we have five vernal pools located on the site. As per our Enrad application, we did document that all of these areas do contain enough evidence to certify them, so they're treated as certifiable. You know, under your local bylaw, you your bylaws more stringent than the Well and Protection Act obviously provides these areas more protection in that from the edge of the boundary of the pool, you establish a hundred foot area to include that as the vernal resource, then you establish your your disturbance zones, a new disturbance zone off of that. So the comment was they wanted to know if we plan to certify these pools. We, our response was that we did not because East Point Energy is leasing this land, they're not the landowner. Didn't believe we have authority to do so, but given the discussion on the last Enrad, I mean, we would consider, we discussed, we would consider certifying them if that was the if the Commission issued that in in order. You know, and part of the ORAD, if the Commission was suggestion would be to put that as a condition that we do certify them within thirty days, we submit the paperwork, we provide copies to the to staff. We're willing to do that. I think that doesn't really change the jurisdiction of protection as it were to these areas, but if that's something.
Certified does up it a notch for the town and and for what national natural heritage?
Sure, puts them on the map, we understand.
Okay, are we all set then with this?
Yes, so it would be thirty days from the day of issuance because, I mean, it might even be twenty-one days before we issue the ORAD, so. And I am comfortable, do you think that's something you should do? Put it in the ORAD or?
I think if it's written in the ORAD, that's fine and it's a condition that might help to follow it, whereas in on.
And we'll start preparing the packages now, so as soon as we get the ORAD, we'll probably be within thirty days, we'll cement in the natural heritage and.
Okay.
As you know, they take.
Copy that.
Copy you guys, we submit them to them and then, as you know, they take typically thirty days to certify and the town ends up holding the records once they're certified.
Okay, and if it and if it takes longer, you guys won't, if they didn't want you to go back in the fall or anything like that, you guys won't wanna do that?
What what do you mean, go back in the fall?
I mean, if any, if they come back and say it's too dry for us to look at it right now, let's.
I mean, we did our field investigation, yeah, we've we've got our, so there's actually two years of documentation. BHB identified these wetlands originally on this project site back in twenty twenty-two. And then East Point contracted us to come in this year, so we had BHB's wetland report, so we actually have two years with the data and photos on these areas, so I think we have more than enough documentation to to certify these pools with natural heritage.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's that's.
A motion to.
Say a couple more, Weston and Sampson, a couple more comments.
Okay, sure, sure, can.
Sure. And third comment, number three was, we had provided wetland donation data forms for eight of the nine wetlands. It was suggested that we should fill out another data form for the ninth. You know, we did, we did provide, we didn't think it was necessary to do another documentation form for the ninth wetland is the criteria that we used to flag that was very similar to three or four of the others. We did describe a narrative, the regulations don't require that we that we submit a form for each. I mean, we could if the Commission really wants us to, but Weston and Sampson did review the wetland lines. They didn't, there's no flag was moved, they'd agreed with all of our lines, we didn't move one flag, so they've in essence reviewed all of all of our lines and agreed that everything is accurately donated.
Okay.
So we have transition on here, like more.
No, it's, yeah.
Nine was that, sorry, nine was that isolated area right in the middle of of the transmission line corridor. And it's right next to another area, the same exact looking area, criteria, they're both isolated, they're both vernal pools, they both have button bush in them and essentially just isolated depressions.
Okay.
Over right away.
Yeah, a lot of the wetlands were exactly the same, so makes sense, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. You have any more?
I got two more.
Okay.
Yeah, don't forget to ask.
Yes, I will.
Okay. One of our wetland donation forms didn't check off the hydroic soil indicator. We we did that, we corrected that form to check the right box and resubmitted that form. Got a chance to look at it?
I have not.
And. And the last comment was something that we talked about last time, it was just to note that based upon MASH GIS data, the site is in an area mapped as an outstanding resource water or watershed for outstanding resource water. That that is correct, I mean, we did note that and talk about that last time, so. Basically, from a Well and Protection Act perspective, outstanding resource water, they're defined by three fourteen CMR. Four, which is the the surface water quality standards. And so class A outstanding waters are actually listed, each watershed has a listing of waters that are class A waters. None of the stream on site, there's only one stream, it's an intermittent stream. That stream is a couple orders of magnitude upgrading of any of the water bodies in that watershed that are listed as class A waters, so. Again, regardless, it's really not an Enrad issue, we know that's an issue, like so noted. If we do proceed with any development on this parcel and we do file an NOI, we'll have to, you know, have that discussion later on and and go through that discussion at that time, so really nothing to do there, we're aware. That's kind of the issue on outstanding resource waters. And that, again, no flags removed, Weston and Sampson agreed with all our flags. And we appreciate the thorough review, it's got out there on a hot day and. Had an early start of it, but that's that's it, so I I think that, you know, with that, there's no additional information that we we owe the peer reviewer and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, first of all, anybody on the Commission have questions? Anyone in the audience have questions?
Nancy Blount, Jacob Stahl, Law and Company. What is the intent use of this property and how many acres is involved?
Uh, right now, there's, so the the intent use of this project is being investigated and trying to determine, you know, what a future project could look like on this site. Right now, the purpose is just to set jurisdiction and work with East Point Energy to to determine what they want to do on this property.
East Point Energy as in like solar farms or something like that?
They're a renewable energy company, so some form of renewable energy is being potentially considered.
And how many acres are you looking at in this leased property?
Well, the entire project site is. At least roughly thirty-seven acres.
Okay.
So at this current time, the important step is to set these jurisdictional boundaries to see, you know, what is usable or what we can could potentially do with the with this project site, so I don't know, you know, out of the thirty-seven, some of it's unavailable because it's wetlands, we have no disturb zones, so I don't know whether the.
Have you gone to the planning board yet? Or too soon?
Too soon.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience, okay, ma'am?
I'm heading through tech, sir. I own the property in Johnny Oak Street with a meat and butter. A couple of questions, there's a lot of discussion of vernal pools. There is a work on the site?
How you doing, Mr. Fennett?
Yeah, no, we didn't have.
The stone hit all, going right through the stone wall that's there, so it leads back. Three years.
Those are heat masses.
It looked like that.
Yeah.
Let me see it.
No.
Okay, well. The seventy-one, okay.
I can't answer that.
Still doing things old school. That's great, and actually, you know, thank you for pointing that out because that was actually a comment that I missed in the in the letter, I was trying to scan through the letter, so one of the comments was that there is an intermittent stream. I I was anticipating that Weston and Sampson was gonna make a a big presentation, so. There is an intermittent stream channel within. Board, well, system two, which is up at the front of the site. Does have an intermittent stream system that comes through somewhere through here. One of the comments was, you know, we should assess the stream, it's an intermittent stream, it, you know, in in some instances, it does have a very defined bank, there wasn't any flow in it at the time of our site visit. And then the other places, it just sort of has braided flow or sheet flow through the wetland where it then rechanalizes. So we do know it's there, I do recognize that land underwater, intermittent streams do have a bank and land underwater. We're not asking the Commission to include that as part of their Enrad determination, so I guess you'll have to note that the Commission didn't didn't make a jurisdictional determination on the location of the stream channel itself. If we do have a notice of intent filing down the road, we would have to then locate centerline of stream so that we can identify where bank and land underwater is and identify any potential impacts or performance or standards then, and then at that point, I would assume a peer reviewer could also review that. We've accurately depicted the extent of of the stream channel within that system and bank and land underwater. Really, I mean, I mean, focus here on the Enrad is to identify the edge of vegetated wetlands and the and the other setbacks so we can determine what we have for usable area and see if we even have a viable project site for for the a project, for renewable energy project.
Uh, so we kind of walked on their foot a bit also, and it's, you know, mosquito. Getting out there. The extent of wetlands, it's, so we're the large property of the top rate in the corner of this presentation. So. It is concerning because that wetland is out there. It's neat, it's substantially larger. And that. And again, obviously, not that. Ooh, by having that identified anyway like that, but I think it's it's a little underestimated, there's no wetlands. I took lots of pictures out there of swamp cabbage and blueberries and all different stuff out there, so it just concerns this, if the project goes forward, where is the stormwater gonna go? That's gonna up downgrade a bit of that, so I'm a little concerned as to how that that happens. And the vertical that is number one, which is sheet number nine in your P plan, um, that is, we lived there thirty-five years, it's never been dry. I don't know if it's spring bed, it is certainly in a, in a basin, but it is dry. And we have a small fish pond on our property, frogs appear from noence in that pool. So I'm guessing they're coming from that. But again, whether it be a splitting of pairs or somehow it's, it is clearly there.
It's, it's jurisdictional, it has a jurisdictional boundary.
Yeah, the stream, so that picture, it's a little hard to capture, but the water's flowing through. And it's about twelve inches deep, I agree that it is more plain open and banked, but. Nonetheless, and then we have some old property information that also shows an easement for branch. And I didn't plot it out exactly where is it called in here, but if they plotted it then, it's. It's been a concern for a while, even.
Sure.
And I don't know who's, if that easement is just on people or ever was enacted on, but, you know, clearly it's been a concern.
Has anyone listened to see if the drainage is fine with pro, the property or?
Drainagement? Uh, I don't know, I don't, we, so we, we're having an all the survey done now, we, we'll have some more features later. Like I said, our main focus on the INRAD application is just to set the edges of, of these vegetated wetland resource areas to also, you know, sort of quantify these as, as run of pools, so we know what the correct offsets and jurisdictional statuses of them. I mean, again, if, if the commission want, really wanted us to add this stream in and that was something of concern at this point, um, you know, we, we would continue and go ahead and go locate that and do that as part of this process, however, you know, if you noted that in the ORAD that you didn't certify that or you set that jurisdiction, we'd have to do that at a later date if we did propose a project. I mean, this, this stream, this stream's not gonna have any additional setbacks. And again, like I said, we're just trying to identify edge of vegetated wetlands and then subsequent no disturbed zones and, and hundred-foot zones and establish run of pool zones so that we can understand, um, what we have for upland area here, um, and potential for, to look at some different site design options. Very early in the design process.
Okay, could you give a copy to the commission of that easement? You?
Would I kind of subrare?
That should be a, they should be able to do this when they do the survey and.
Okay.
But I do have a concern, say this project doesn't go forward and we approve an INRAD, right, and an ORAD. I want, I would want to make sure that it's inclusive because who knows who the next?
Yes, owner, yeah.
I mean, what you've been doing this month, and you guys know, Jack, you know I don't get that, so.
Okay.
Also suggestions in this drawing, so it's showing a heavy gray color on the wetlands, which is fine, I don't, no issue about that. But what it does do is appropriate the visual, visual below that color. And in that area where that brook is, there's like four or five really large arachnids. You need heavy, there's no like pushing them out of the way. They are good landmarks for benchmarking anybody going out there. It's, I don't know. Maybe two hundred feet away from the corner, property corner. So, I mean, it's one of those things that, that, that brook was right there, uh, in that area, there, there's some really large pine trees in it, flip nowhere. Those will obviously subject to deterioration going with it. But the one thing, uh, even with smaller rocks in the area, the one thing is right below the surface. And you could see it just in the, the soil, the blackened rocks and a lot of the trees are elevated, so.
But just, yeah, so, um, we still, Megan's here. She had to do the presentation anyway, right?
Okay.
I mean, Mark did a great job, like, most of my comments, the only one I would add to it is just that we did observe an eastern box turtle who were out there. Um, there's a photo of that in the letter report, it's not in that letter, it's not past that, it's just speaking of that concern. Um, but that's just something to know.
But it could be reported.
But they won't.
Yeah.
Mark did a great.
Okay, so.
You could specifically request that Weston Sampson is reviewing the site, when they review sites, they can report any species that they find, so. In this case, we have to ask you guys if you were okay with that. Um, at this point, I don't know if, what you got, I kind of feel like maybe we need a little more information, but we'll be approving the ORAD, so.
The next question of?
Little more information before you approve the INRAD?
What, just specifically what information? Yeah, I mean, I think.
Does the drainage really wetland or is it drainage, you know what I mean?
There, uh, so all, all of the areas from a drainage perspective, all of the areas that are shown here are nat, natural BBWs, um, you've brought a vegetated wetlands. Um, you know, I, I didn't recognize any drainage easement there, again, it's, it's in INRAD to set wetlands related jurisdiction. Um, if and when we have a notice of intent filing, we'll have to consider full stormwater design that considers drainage at that point in time, we'll have full survey plans. Um, I, I do understand your point on the stream, and again, that's something that we will have to consider also during the design. So I think that, you know, as we're talking about it, it, it's worth the extra effort to go ahead and locate centerline of that stream and include land underwater and bank as part of the, as part of the INRAD application. And then, again, we can start working on the certification forms, you get that, you get those packages going, so have that all cleaned up and in for the August meeting.
Okay, any other? Okay, now, so we have to approve the request that they've already, uh, given the money. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, because the Weston and Sampson, uh, um, gave their proposed budget, uh. Even prior to this, so they could get going, we need an approval of, uh, seventy-one fifty, that's seven thousand one hundred fifty dollars for peer review by Weston and Sampson, uh, and.
Formal, well, because the contracts are already signed.
Yeah.
We, uh, we gotta go back and the other ones, we already went through our edge.
Okay, is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll stack it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, is there a motion to, uh, close the hearings? You want to continue?
Yes, please. Yeah.
Okay.
We agree to continue, Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt, but I just, I'm also on the following, uh, Lisa had asked me a question about the observation form and so, on behalf of East Point Energy, we have no, no objections to Weston and Sampson filing a species observation form.
Okay, motion to.
It was, it was, as we were approaching the review, the boundary here of, of this wetland two area, it was in this, in this, there, right in here, in this quadrant of the site.
Okay, uh, so we need a motion to continue.
Motion to continue to eight fifteen.
I'll stack it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
You have a good evening.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Jim, could we backtrack and go back and open, um. I know we had a continuance for. The last one, Almeida, it's the name, it's the, um, zero Williams.
Oh, that's nineteen twenty?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, on the previous, um.
So we have to reopen.
Well, we did, we never closed it, it was just, um, continued. Um, okay, is there a mo, okay, going back one item, is there a motion to request our peer review one thousand nine hundred twenty dollars, um, to the INRAD application from Antonio Almeida?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll stack it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that was, okay, so that's peer review. Okay, moving on, uh, to the bottom, very bottom of the. I'm sorry?
You gotta go to Butler, yeah, to Milk Street.
Anyway, okay. All those, uh, we got, we got a head on on them. Um, okay, I'm going up one more to, um, an INRAD by David E. Butler, from David D. Butler. And that was peer review for forty-seven hundred twenty dollars.
Well, that contract is already signed, uh, but yeah, you guys might have already voted on it, but go ahead.
So moved.
It's not gonna hurt.
Second?
I'll stack it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, are we all set with all those, I mean, I mean, we were very, maybe extremely efficient.
Milk Street, you need one more. Milk Street, you need to vote on that one too, Jim.
I'll grasp it.
So that one is?
We just don't have an exact money amount, just. On the agenda, just monies.
Now, which one is this? This is Bell Farms.
This would be the May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, um. Contract with Weston Sampson. So just so everybody knows, we're not spending town taxpayer money on this, this is the consult, the consultant is working for us, the peer review consultant, but the applicant's putting up the money for the review, so it's got the duty process. Forty-three hundred dollars.
How much?
It's phase C for Milk Street and it's forty-three hundred dollars.
Okay, um, under the INRAD, uh, INRAD for Bell Pharma states, uh, peer review, uh, fees of forty-three hundred dollars, is there a motion?
So moved.
Stack it.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, moving on.
Okay, uh, notice of intent application by Lee Castanetti, uh, L B H Hunters Hill LLC to construct a community center with associated mailbox, parking lot, pool, and sports court.
How we doing?
Along with associated clearing and a grading, eh, eh.
How we doing, Lee?
Grading at Hunters Hill, map twenty-one lot six, six A, seven A, twelve, uh, twenty-three, thirty-seven, forty-six. And map twenty-two lots five, uh, six dash two, map twenty-three lot eight. A portion of the work falls within jurisdictional wetland resources, uh, uh, you have a file number that came in?
Yeah.
Not yet. Okay.
You can make that.
Hey, I, I don't know if you, okay, Jack, I don't know if you've seen these.
Yeah.
Hey. Thank you very much, uh, Brian, CNN. Pinching for Evan Watson, junior engineering, uh, today, Lee Castanetti from Holmes is also, uh, with me. Uh, the proposed project involves the construction of a clubhouse center to, or the, uh, serve at Hunters Hill subdivision, which I'm, I think you guys are all familiar with.
Yes, we had a few, uh, months.
That's right. Um, so the proposed clubhouse center, which consists of a community center, uh, small parking area, uh, mail center, uh, a pool, some sports courts, and surrounding landscaping, has been designed, so it's greater than a hundred feet away from, uh, the bordering vegetated wetland systems, uh, within the surrounding area in addition to greater than two hundred feet away from, uh, pools surrounding area. Um, RDA is due this, for this, for. Proposed work activity is proposing to alter approximately a four thousand square foot isolated vegetated wetland that's protected under the bylaw only, it's not a state jurisdiction wetland. That wetland is immediately adjacent to Clubhouse Drive, uh, which just recently got paved. So it's immediately adjacent to the existing roadway, uh, it's a low-quality wetland. And what is being proposed is mitigation to offset those is a, um, pretty extensive, uh, restoration plan. Um, sorry, I don't have a larger board, but, um, that, that's the area I've highlighted in green here. Um, about an eight thousand square foot replication area.
See, uh, okay, here's the roadway, so you got that, okay, this is the, the area lined in green.
Uh, no.
No, no, this is your building.
Yeah, so.
All right, here it is.
Yeah, the restoration is over here.
Okay.
So the, um, in, in the restoration, uh, for the eight thousand square foot, uh, wetland replication area, uh, occurs at the, uh, southernly terminus. Had identified a small, you know, uh, run pool type habitat where there was wood frog egg masses, uh, breeding in this specific location. Uh, this area, and you can see on the old tree line here, was previously disturbed as part of that original, uh, start of the project uh, back in the mid-two thousands, uh, and this area was incidentally excavated out and reverted to being a wetland. Um, and where we're proposing the wetland replication area is currently the, uh, former access road that cut through this area. Uh, if you recall, the central portion of the site had a number of house lots proposed that were ultimately abandoned given the presence of the wetlands and run of pools within the area. And so the intent is also, because this is just a small little run of pool pocket that was incidentally created, uh, created larger, uh, more purposeful, uh, run of pool habitat, that's that, uh, contour one forty-seven. Uh, in addition to the additional wetland, that's going to replace the existing dirt roadway in that footprint. The, uh, vegetated swale that you see here was previously permitted, uh, as part of the overall drainage system for the subdivision. Um, it, it flows down to a, um, kind of like a skilling basin, a catch basin that, um, connects to the larger drainage system, uh, in the pre-existing stormwater basins. Um, stormwater from the clubhouse center, uh, is going to, uh, at least on the south side, run off directly to that vegetated swale. Otherwise, it's being redirected to catch basin within the roadway, connecting to that previously constructed stormwater basin. Um, the, in comparison to the reconfiguration of the subdivision, there's been a significant net decrease in the pervious surfaces of what was formally approved originally as, uh, roadway and or house lots. I think Evan had listed in the narrative, it was on the order of a hundred and fourteen thousand square feet, uh, plus reduction. Um, so it's just kind of basically a retrofit of the stormwater management, uh, less impervious surface, less runoff. And what the location of the community center effectively allows is, it's been cited immediately adjacent to the Clubhouse Drive roadway. Uh, that allows for a greater, uh, contiguous open space areas directly to the west, the central open space areas, and provides more habitat connectivity and protection for the wetland system, surrounding buffer zones, upland areas, and run of pools that we previously have noted in that area. Uh, again, that, th- this isolated wetland is low-quality, immediately adjacent to the roadway, it's got infrastructure right up against the edge of fire hydrants, water lines, et cetera. Um. I don't want to add anything, but I think I'll, I'll turn over to questions if there are any.
Any, uh?
I don't have any questions at this time.
No, not at this time, we, we are, you, your file number has to be coming in on this and, um, uh, we'll have maybe more questions coming up, uh. we'll have maybe more questions coming up at our next meeting.
I have a question. For the estimate to the review.
Yes.
For the stormwater and.
Lisa, do you mind if we ask?
Yeah, I have a question.
What's the sound of the stream coming?
I asked if we could have Mitch review it because Mitch was involved to begin with. And he said it's been, he thinks it's been too long period at this point. And Weston Sampson is our prime contact unless Mitch is gonna go as a sub under Weston Sampson. I don't know. We'll have to work that out.
Yeah, I'm sure. Point in time. Time on our part. To have somebody come in new and start a drainage evaluation on a project of this magnitude from scratch?
But just to correct you, the other thought is that because Weston's gonna review it for planning board. So anytime we have a project that involves more than one board or committee now, it's always gonna be Weston Sampson because that's what the contours.
It seems grossly unfair and unreasonable, both cost wise and time wise. Particularly on the drainage side of things. We've got a continuity with ecosystem.
Yeah, ecosystem solutions.
And you said ecosystem solutions and Mitch that did all this, all proprietary services, have all this data done on the drainage analysis for the entire project that this is just supplemental to.
And again.
Jim, you wanna have your own conversation with the town administrator or, I don't know, you want to, but?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I will.
Why the town administrator? Weston Sampson can struggle with planning board. With the other, but for these continuity, not that I have it duplicated.
For the planning board, do you need a peer review?
I don't know.
Yes, he?
Nancy Coolat, chair of the stormwater committee. While I'm here, I'm familiar with the site because we've been there. But when I do retrofit the original stormwater system, automatically it's telling me it's gonna have to be reviewed for stormwater. And it is Weston Sampson working in conjunction with the planning board. And Hong Kong, they're going to be doing work here. I will tell you this. When Weston Sampson comes into an existing project, they don't start from day one. They're gonna ask for the data that is currently on file and they will look at that file. And then from there, they will look at the site and the new plans. We've gone through this with stormwater projects, solar farms. And they don't start from, forget everything that happened. They're gonna ask you for records and that's where we'll start. So there should not be duplication. By the same token, when they get through doing their report or reports, because there are at least potentially three different committees, commission boards involved, they will cover all of the areas that we need information on so that when that report gets issued, planning is gonna have their info, stormwater is gonna have theirs, and you won't have to bounce around from place to place.
Okay, we have to continue it because of lack of file number. That's number one. And so if we do a request of peer review, we'll have to check in and for you to also contact planning and the risks so that everything is done at once.
Well, they didn't file with planning yet. But the point is Weston Sampson will already be familiar because of, it's an interdepartment review in some sense. But we're not asking for delineation review. I told them we don't need that.
No, we already have more conditions for the entire site.
Correct. Yeah. Okay, so we would need a review for stormwater?
Of course.
And?
We don't have, it's not engineer. I'm not an engineer. I'm not comfortable with the calculations and all that.
Okay. All right, so our portion of the review then would be what?
Our portion of the review is to review the notice of intent, the stormwater before the drainage calculations.
Okay, so if we, if stormwater is in our report, that's gonna take care of your committee as well. So that's gonna be two right out of the way. And then planning board, you're gonna have to go to them and see what they need. So we'll get it all covered at once. Okay, now I don't know how you would come up with a fee since.
I think that came in, did that come in? Sorry, submit that. We did. For the NOI.
You know, I, again, I don't know how, you know, the fee would be divided, how that would work, or if the fee is all held in one committee, one commission.
No, it's not all held in one commission.
Okay, so we would do our separate one?
Yeah.
And they would do theirs?
Yeah.
And you would accept ours?
No, what will happen is there will be, Weston Sampson will put together a proposal and they will indicate to each committee, board, commission, what the cost will be to provide the info you need, the full planning needs, and what the info is stormwater needs. It may all come out in one report, but they will focus on the needs of each committee. But again, they are not gonna go back to before the ground was even broken. In the case of stormwater, they're going to look to see what was there or what was approved and what the modifications are that they're planning. Okay?
No.
The same thing with planning board. The project unapproved, but there's gonna be some changes. So Weston Sampson will be looking to see what has changed from the originally approved plan. And in your case, it's what difference may have, may occur because of what they're proposing. They're not as in, they don't duplicate work. By the same token, when this, when these three components come out, they will be costs associated with each one because we have to keep the funds separate. Planning, stormwater, conservation. And they will bill it that way. So that work they do for stormwater will be paid out of that.
But it's as simple, but it's as simple as one person coming one time or one visit doing everything?
No, I wouldn't say it's that simple. What they're gonna give you is an outline of field work they have to do, site visits that they have to do, meetings if they have to attend them. And they'll break them down and come up with the cost so that the person owning the project will know ahead of time what's going to be provided. And when that proposal comes in, we're all obligated, we, the town, we're obligated to look at it to see if our own specific areas are going to be covered sufficiently. Like if I want them to come to a stormwater meeting or you need them to do a presentation, and it can be by Zoom, but that will all be in there and will be clear.
Okay.
I would say we may share some of this. Last night, I was at, not last night, a planning board meeting because they were acting, yeah, it was last night, we were acting on a change in the Brook Street solar drainage system. And stormwater had a joint meeting because we wanted to see what happened. As it turned out, planning did approve it. Now we have to go through the twenty day period and all that. Stormwater, based on what happened last night, will approve it. So we were all together in that. We all shared information on that particular project. So I'll, I see this happening on this too. Okay? There will be sharing.
Yeah. So I do have the proposal that came in. So, but the only thing I would say is, and Evan had mentioned this to me, so we should send over what Mitch already did for review. And then with the proposal amount, the review, the application package, preparation of the memo and attending the center meeting, including reviewing the product site plan, based on notices of intent and is sixty one forty, no, sixty four fifteen. Six thousand four hundred and fifteen. But if you guys ever provide the Mitch information to them, maybe we'll reduce it, right?
We'll provide that tomorrow, as long as I have the contact information.
Well, I'm, yeah, town hall's not open tomorrow, but if.
I'll be making my call. She can contact me. I'll give her Evan's contact information.
That's.
They can correspond with each other.
Yeah, that would be a good thing.
And copy you wanted as well.
Yeah.
But you can send it directly to her. He, actually, that's why the number wasn't assigned. He sent that to D E P. She reached out to him and asked him for that yesterday and he sent her the stormwater and drainage reports. And she had just had proof that they were in existence.
Okay.
And that she indicated the number will be assigned on Monday.
Yeah, so it might very well be that like their estimate doesn't change from sixty four fifteen. But if at the end of it, there's money left over, obviously you get it back.
And you can, you can motion to approve that.
Yeah.
If you want, please, that's.
Okay.
I'll provide you with that check.
Yeah, we don't wanna forget to do that.
Okay, so we're gonna put this to a peer review?
I have a question about this particular one. The one Mitch had.
I'm sorry?
I said I have a question.
Go ahead.
And I don't understand exactly where you're petitioning it on. So I would like to see the diagram to understand where you're putting it.
Sure.
I just couldn't quite figure that out. So that was my question. So before you vote on it, can I have more questions?
Well, it's gonna be voted to continue. So it'll be next month as well.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we're going to put it to.
Can I make a motion now?
Let's wait till, in case we have, because we're gonna need Weston and Sampson and then a continuation. So this is gonna be mainly a stormwater and. Okay, Lisa, so what we're gonna need is, is a, a motion to have Weston and Sampson do a peer review.
Correct. But Megan just gave me some more information too.
Yes, our original proposal was based off of the information that was provided, which is our water report, the calculations were not provided. So once we get that, we can take another closer look and give a more, more exact proposal if that makes sense to.
Okay, so we need a motion to, to contact Weston and Sampson for peer review price.
Well, they already provided one, so a motion to, yes, that's fine.
Okay, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now a motion to continue the hearing until eight fifteen.
Motion to continue hearing till eight fifteen.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks so much.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Have a good night, Lee.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, we have a notice of intent from Robert and Carol Nolett of Zero Maple Swamp Road to construct a proposed barn and yard. A portion of the work falls within the jurisdictional wetland resource. File number seventeen five hundred. That seems like that number.
File number?
No, that's the wrong file number, has to be. Because Almeida has that one on William Street.
Okay, hold on. Oh, five zero seven, you're right.
Five zero seven.
Good catch, chairman. Good catch.
Peer review is needed and Weston Sampson proposal was received in the amount of six thousand one hundred dollars. We received the money on seven fifteen. Now, do we have to vote on that?
I did not, I don't believe because we're waiting for double, the accounting department waiting for double time, which just came in yesterday. But yes, you do need to vote on.
Okay, a vote to have Weston and Sampson to, to do a peer review in the amount of six thousand one hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that will be, no one's here on them, right? So it'll be continued until eight fifteen. A motion to continue.
Motion to continue to eight fifteen.
We did have a lot of, we said, guys, now we have a lot of others coming with questions, but I told them all it's continued.
Yeah, but no one's here.
That's okay. We can't discuss it if you request it to continue.
Okay.
On the floor.
A certificate of compliance request.
Motion on the floor.
I thought we already did the motion.
Oh, wait until second.
Not to continue, but I second as to continue.
It's called a vote.
Call the vote.
You made the motion?
Yep.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Request for a certificate of compliance from B W C Greenbrook LLC, nine oh three Tremont Street and six twenty four Middle Street. Weston and Sampson has been contacting and providing us with peer review services. Five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars was requested for peer review on seven three twenty four. Lisa, can you?
We're waiting the funds on that.
I'm here for that, great point, absolutely. Pappy is in the mail. We'll be here Monday.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, and now do we have to vote on that amount to, to accept that amount of money?
Yep.
Okay, a motion is needed to accept Weston and Sampson's peer review contract in the amount of five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're not here to deal with anything on it or to talk?
So I just thought I was kinda geared at asking, so once the check's received and the review is complete, is that they're gonna have to come back for another meeting vote for the acceptance of the C O C?
Yeah, and then, then it will be a certificate of compliance after that. Okay.
I'm new to Massachusetts, so I'm just getting familiar with the processes here.
Okay, all right, and our accent.
All right, perfect.
Okay, do we have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to eight fifteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Megan and I both have disclosures that we submitted based on ethics disclosures. Form twenty three B three, right?
Yep. So I, as a consultant, have worked for, I believe.
Yeah, I know, I was there, but yes.
Yeah, so just disclosing that our company works for them, they are clients. However, I was not involved in this project or the nature or any part of it, so should be able to clearly review the application.
Right.
Okay.
Mine's a little more complicated. So you guys know, here, like, the way to the town for the, you know, approval of the notice of intent. But now, you know, they are asking for a certificate of compliance. And in fact, ironically, I've been working at C Con as the interim agent as of recently. And Weston and Sampson is the representative for Blue Wave or should I say Clear? What are they called over there?
Some sort of LLC.
Clear, right, oh. We have another name. Green Book?
No, Green Book, B W C Green Book.
Green Book, yeah.
No, it's a different, in, in C C O, Blue Wave is calling it a different company. In any case, Weston and Sampson is the applicant's representative. And I've been asked by the Giant Conservation, sorry, the C C O Conservation Commission to, to be involved with the review of it. They will also have a consulting firm reviewing it as well. But as the interim conservation agent over there, I've been asked to be involved. So I called the State Ethics Commission, told them exactly what I needed to do. And I'm in the process of filing the form twenty-three B three, a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest to.
You're not going to vote on this project, right?
But anyways, I'm submitting it to Giant and I'm submitting it to C C O so that if anyone had any concerns or anything, that's what's going on.
Sounds fun.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Exactly, paperwork.
Okay, and you, you're doing what you have to do, work.
Yes.
All right, so we are continued till the.
April fifteenth. All right, I'll see you guys then.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, we have the draft of the conservation bylaw changes. Anything, okay, we don't have anything on that now.
Motion to table till eight fifteen.
Okay, second on the table?
Did anyone have anything more to add to that, to that, or no? Because I mean.
I don't think so.
I mean, did I give each of you last meeting a copy of? So these are the exemptions that are in the Wetlands Protection Act. And we talked about adding those as exemptions on a local bylaw. Another item that we should add in talking to the town permitting is they would like, also like a copy of applications when they get submitted to us. So we'll add them to the list of people who we have submitted applications to or departments.
We just need to be notified what's coming out, so if we have to follow up to find out if they need stormwater permits. Because if I don't come to a meeting or something, I don't really know what's happening.
Right.
Okay. Lisa, the, the letter, we, we have here a draft for the town permitting authorities. Didn't we already deal with that with the selectmen? No?
Oh.
I thought they hadn't checked the box when they were going for permit.
Wait, you're skipping over, we're not talking about the bylaw anymore?
Uh, no, that's.
Table to eight fifteen.
Oh, I was just writing the one item.
So, okay, so can we get something all typed up with, with the changes in different color?
I'm hoping, but Maureen has spent here very limited hours, so I don't know.
Okay.
Hopefully, because we want to vote on that next meeting to submit to September, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm going on to the. We did submit a form to the selectmen and to Jim on this, on the town permitting? Or is this something a little bit different now?
Oh, okay.
Coordination between town permitting.
We took that other item off the list because we did submit it. Yeah, we're going to put it on the board of selectmen. This is different, so we'll talk about that, you're talking about under public input.
Okay, all right.
This is, this is the issue of town permitting authorities and projects. Basically coordination between boards based on current bylaws. There was a draft that came out by the planning board and Mike Mullin. And we're supposed to be discussing it, but so far the only one that's provided any input after reviewing it was Paul at a meeting, remember?
No.
Couple months ago. So do we take that off the agenda?
Yep.
This was discussed last night at the planning board, and it was taken off their agenda.
Was taken off?
Yeah. Jeff Cavala wasn't really, he got there late, so they took it off the agenda.
Okay, well, I mean.
Okay, so we'll remove it for.
I think until maybe we have another town administrator, maybe the issue just kind of lays.
Okay, well, then we'll just remove it for the next month and from the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, request for a laptop purchase.
Yeah, so did a little research with Chris, the IT person at Town Services. Chris sent me a link and he said Dell updates their D O S section regularly, so the link may only be available for a few days. But the laptop is somewhere around four hundred and thirty dollars plus taxes delivery.
Well, we wouldn't have taxes.
Okay, so plus deliveries, and we'll need Microsoft Office for a hundred and five. And we have a list of setup and updates for install, provide anti-viral and.
Wait, wait, this, this isn't just tie in with, with a, I mean, I got a computer at home. I just push a button and, and it remotely ties in.
No, he's a consultant and he needs to make sure we have all the malware and firewall protection and.
But now, okay, is this, is this a town employee?
Chris, no, he's a consultant with the town. He's from Netospect. He does all the IT work.
So is he under contract with the town?
Yes.
Yes.
So then we, if we buy the computer, then, then the town should take care of the setup rather than us paying for it.
Oh, each individual board and committee get charged. So anyways, that's what I was getting at.
You have an IT budget? It would come out of that?
We have a what budget?
IT.
Planning, we got it.
Okay.
We got so many budgets that.
I need to talk to the T A then.
Okay, so Lisa, how, how much are we going to have to spend?
Approximately nine hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, and this would come out of what account?
If we need a laptop. To be frank, I continue to keep using my phone or, and my iPod. I don't have a problem with that, but when Megan, Maureen, that she was using her personal laptop coming to meetings, I don't think that should be, I don't think she should have to do that. But she may not have to keep doing the minutes after tonight anyway.
So should we put this on hold then?
We would put it on hold.
Okay, motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have payable, bills payable? Okay, all right, so now we're under updates.
We'll have to do those next meeting. She wasn't around to reveal that stuff for.
Okay.
Right?
All right, all right, you're on as far as the.
Yes, so two three seven one Tremont Street, I'll give you guys a hot date. Mr. Susie has sent a email today. I'm going to read it for the record. Mr. Susie, John Zajak, the attorney. He said, "Good morning, Lisa. On behalf of my client, I request a continuance for tonight, from tonight's hearing."
Wait, this is under twenty-three seventy-one Tremont?
Yep.
To August eighth hearing. I will be emailing you the revised plan this afternoon. And this will give the commission time to review the plans. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you, John.
Okay, so, so the revised plan is coming in.
And I responded, I'm just reading it for the record, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, John. Next meeting is Thursday, August fifteenth at seventeen AM, Upper Level Old Town Hall, Summer City. Future, the request for a continuance would make more sense if you, if you, for you to present the revised plan at the August fifteenth meeting. When I receive the revised plan, I will review it and send out to the commission members three individual reviews. But they will review as a commission and discuss at the next meeting, August fifteenth, and possibly act on it as well, so we may are satisfied. I look forward to seeing the amended plan based on our discussion with Commissioner Dave Phillips, Jr., Associate Member Abel Mariano, yourself and I at our June seventeenth plan review meeting. Hope you're spending more time inside than outside in this one, Lisa. So I also got an email from Mr. Zajak. I also represent Mr. Woodmore. I'm sorry, that was.
Yeah, that's from a list.
Yeah, so I think it hasn't come in.
Hasn't, okay.
Not yet.
Okay, well, if he said, oh, it might get it, might come in tomorrow, then or whatever. All right, so let's continue that until eight fifteen.
Yeah.
Yep.
Motion needed?
Do we need a mo, no, we don't really don't need a motion.
Okay, all right. On, on Horton Street, we've had some ups and downs on that, and I want to make sure that I have the right zero Horton Street. This is up by the church, right, Lisa? Make sure I got the right one.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I received a phone call that the, that the sale has gone through, but he was busy doing fairs, and he wasn't able to come for this meeting. I don't know if he's in New Hampshire or Vermont, but he was very excited, and I was excited for him as well.
I think we are, huh?
That's Mr. Buffington.
Mm-hmm.
And so I, I know that when, when he comes back, we'll see him in either August or September, and we will have his plan, because I know the, the plan is, is ready to go. We don't have it yet, but it will be forthcoming. Okay, fourteen twenty William Street?
We can probably take that off. I haven't heard anything from him either. They're giving up, they're dredging sand. I don't know, next time you're at the move judge, you can ask him if he's decided to dredge it or not. But we did send a letter out to him on May second regarding clarification of agricultural extensions versus by law requirements.
Okay.
All right, so we can take that one off.
Okay, ten thirty-three Oak Street?
Yeah, so that one we did receive, and I was, I haven't even heard it discussed it, but we did receive a mitigation plan, which I haven't had time to look at. But if anybody wants to look at it, can certainly look at it. I wouldn't do it right now. If you want to take a moment and look at it, I'm assuming that it will come to the next meeting.
Okay, so that's, oh.
Does anybody want a copy to bring home?
Yes, I do, please, thank you.
Fifteen.
All right, we're on.
Okay, can we continue to Wheeler Street?
Yeah, no update on that. The building permit is just sitting in the queue.
Okay.
Can we remove that one too, or, I mean, maybe we should keep that one. Probably keep it.
Okay, let's go to thirteen thirty-four Tremont.
Okay, so we had asked him to be in attendance at the last meeting, and I guess he's checked out on this.
This is the new house on the, okay, I mean, I go by there often, and he's, he's putting something way in the back out of the.
The new owner, yeah, the new owner.
Put a pool.
A floor.
Yeah.
Outside.
But the area is all grass in the front and.
Yeah, grass looks good.
Very good.
Yeah, so the concern is really just, is the brown pool going to come back?
Yeah.
So I think we should leave on the agenda, because we did ask them to come back and he has not.
Okay. Twenty-four seventy Pleasant Street?
We did a, we did a site visit. It sounds like the owner has contacted Outback to prepare a restoration plan, which is good news.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was very, very accommodating and.
Very what he was.
Yeah, and I'm sure that we'll be hearing from him with, with, with his plan very shortly.
Right.
Okay, seven ten Center Street?
I think they've given a couple of messages. I have not heard that. So I think it's just kind of confused us to weed it out. I'll try to call them again next week or tomorrow.
Okay, eight eighty Hart Street?
And let's back up though. Has anyone seen any activity there? It still looks the same.
Still looks the same. I drove by the, I was by there the other day. You know, you know, his nice old truck that is in the driveway that I mentioned, it's actually parked on the other side. That is the only difference that I saw. Just letting you know.
Ten, ten seventy Smith Street?
Yeah, so they did get our consultant list. It looks like they reached out to Xena. They asked if delineation would be sufficient, and I said, well, it depends. It seems like you probably need some sort of restoration as well, so.
Did they go into the wetlands or just in the buffer?
They definitely, they definitely appear to be in the twenty-five foot no touch with the clearing.
Well, they can just have to replant that area with.
Some stuffing, yeah. So I said, I'm not sure if you're going to need a plan, but the wetland scientists can help you figure that out.
Okay, so they'll get back to us.
Yep.
Did we skip eight eighty Hart?
Oh, we did.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, we didn't. You were the one who just made a comment on it.
No?
No, that was seven ten.
Oh. The.
So actually, we do have an update for that one as well. The owner has retained Mr. Zajak. And I responded to him, he emailed me today. At least I also represent Mr. Woodmore. I am on board with the continuance as well. Please confirm that there is no need to appear receivable. Hi, John, not received. Please advise him to attend next month on eight fifteen at seventeen AM, Upper Level Old Town Hall, and then when someone's set up. Also be advised if the enforcement order requires them to submit a restoration plan by August fourth. Thank you, Lisa. So.
Okay, so, so that's for next meeting. Okay.
Thank you, Lisa. I will let them know. You responded.
Okay. Are we all set? We're ready for public input?
Yeah.
Public input. Bill, I guess you're here. Yes, Bill?
Hi, Bill.
Hey, how you doing, guys?
Good.
Uh-oh.
How about the Celtics?
About what?
Celtics.
Oh, what about them?
They won.
I know that. But I, I need to get some information from the commission.
Yeah.
On, on. On the sign down at the turnaround at the conservation property that we own.
Okay, near Somerset?
On the line.
Somerset, yes, Somerset, yes.
The sign, like right in the middle?
The sign that's there.
Yeah.
How is that possible? How can people put a sign on conservation?
Is that, oh, is that a?
Is that the Lions Club?
Yes.
Yes.
No. Little words on the top of the sign says, "We support the Lions Club." I support the Lions Club, Nancy supports the Lions Club, but these people are advertising their.
Their business. Oh, yeah, there's one in Noctide on the island right across, if you have a water bubble.
I saw the one in the bubble bar, because I go by there, I haven't been by that one down there.
The only difference is they're different sponsors, Lions Club is involved, and the flowers that they're planting are different. I think it's the same idea as the bus bridge where the cars is with a sign like that there. And the company, I couldn't say name of it yet, I don't know, I don't know if they're a fee. I think they're going to donate something to the Lions, I think Lions.
Okay, but now, I guess what Bill is saying is that's on conservation land.
Actually, it's in the buffer slot.
I'm sorry?
It's in the buffer slot, that whole.
That whole. Turnaround, now Somerset, to the best of my knowledge, Bill, has a deed right for a bus turnaround.
They do.
Do you think they brought in Phil for that, Bill? Is there concrete footings or anything with that?
No, they've built a nice little block with paving stones and filled it with dirt, put some flowers in it. But the first week that the sign was up, it was Arujo's farm. The second week was Paul's Custom Exhaust. And now it's an electrical outfitter who's advertising on both sides of the sign.
Nobody ever came to us.
I support the Lions Club, I always have. And I have a business, maybe I'd like to put up a sign at the west entrance of the new trails, you know, the one Tom made?
You know, I understand what you're saying, which is it's on conservation land, it's, they did not ask permission to do this.
They didn't?
No.
No. I don't know anything about it.
It's telling. Saying to you, yes, yes, it's conservation land. Back that up one step, it belongs to the town of Dyke.
It does.
It's assigned to the Conservation Commission. The question to the board of selectmen is, was permission given to, whether it's the Lions, I think it's the Lions Club, did they get permission from the town of Dyke, the board of selectmen to put those boxes there, the one at the water bubble. And in the case of the one in Somerset, Somerset Lions, not only would they have needed the board of selectmen, they would have needed the conservation permission.
Okay.
So they've got to find out where it started.
All right, Lisa, could this be a letter to the selectmen and in such a method that?
Can you just send an email?
Can I send an email?
Yeah.
It's better than.
Yeah, okay. That would have to, now who would they, we would send it to Karen?
Karen, yeah.
Okay, I don't know if I have her, I must have her email address. What? Oh, Peter Karen, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get him somewhere.
Yeah, it was brought to our attention.
It was brought to our attention that private signs have been posted on town property, which is also conservation land.
Well, commercial signs.
What?
Commercial signs.
Commercial signs, okay. I will do that, Bill, I will send it to the selectmen requesting if they gave permission, because we knew nothing about it.
Well, if they're going to put a sign on conservation land, don't you think they would contact?
Hey, they could give us some money.
I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody's paying a fee, but.
I think they are, it's a donation kind of thing.
Probably to the, probably to the Lions, Bill.
I don't know, but I think Mr. Berry has something to do with all this. And we took a drive down there and he pointed it out to me recently.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
Well, I don't want billboards all the way up the road from the.
No, I hear you.
Through the woods, and this is a mini billboard. I don't think it's got any place on the, you know, conservation committee.
Okay, okay, I'm just going to jot down something, Bill.
Can you leave that picture with us?
I can't hear you, never could.
Can you leave the photo? Can you leave the photo?
It's his phone, what's happened?
Oh, wait.
Oh, it's on his phone.
Can I take a picture of it? Thanks.
I think we sat over there.
Got a good voice there, Bill.
Wait, Bill, before you go, I'm going to read you what I'm going to send them.
Good, I'll slip right in and spread out there, see.
It's a selectman issue. At that, at this point. I'm hoping they give. I'm hoping they gave a.
They cost.
And it told me. We didn't give up.
No, Tommy's probably caught a little trap.
I hope so. I'm not thinking, I think what you got to do with the highway. We're still on AS.
All right, where we at?
Correspondence?
Oh, no, he's still writing. How we doing, sir? Good.
Thank you, Jim, for writing that. Lisa, did you have anything on, when I spoke to a lot of studies, way?
Okay, here it is. Concerned citizen has questioned the advertising mini billboard on town property near the Somerset Line. The commission had no knowledge of it and we are wondering if the selectmen approved it. And just let it go at that.
I. You need to add more to that.
Yeah.
If the selectmen approved it, it should come before the Conservation Commission or put a statement in there that that is conservation land.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, that's why I read it out.
It counts as a conservation restriction and you can't put signs on it.
Yeah, both, put that and, and by the way, no one had come to us for.
Okay, if approved by, if approved by you.
You're right, it's a deed restriction.
Wait, say, if approved by you, meaning the selectmen?
Okay, you asked them if they approved it, so not if it approved by you. Just state, this is conservation land and it is, this land has a conservation restriction and cannot have signs placed on it. Now, the water bubble sign is just on the island, it's just town land, it's not that intersection. But that turns around this whole other thing.
Okay, a concerned citizen has questioned the advertising mini billboard on town property near the Somerset Line. The commission had no knowledge of it and we're wondering if the selectmen approved it. This land has a conservation restriction and no signage is permitted.
Awesome.
How's that deal, Bill? I will send it out tomorrow. Thank you for your input. Okay, I think we're all done.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, motion to adjourn is at 8:42, is there a second?
Is second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I got them.
Did you? One fly, you attacked me three times.
I know you.